Okay, it being 6:30, I call this meeting of the Manager's Select Board to order. John Rann.
Here.
Kathy Bellana.
Here.
Ann Harrison is here. Becky Jackson.
I am here.
Brian Zalnson said that he would be late. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Actually, I had one. It was more of just a process question. So Greg, is there any way that we can get an update in preparation for the town meeting? I'm not sure if it should be done as part of the budget process or whatever, but get an update on any items that we approved at last year's town meeting. For example, the one that's coming to mind is the electricity aggregation. There are other things that the town approved, and I just want to make sure somewhere in the next few months we get some sort of an update as to what the status is.
Sure, we can provide them.
Thank you.
Who else? The chairman's report. First, I will take comments on any new action items that we should add. I guess that's a new action item.
That was one. Let's see. I think I had a couple of questions on the existing actions just to get my brain refocused for 2024. I noticed that we have a discussion planned for February 5th on the early voting, and the early voting times for the presidential election have already been set on the calendar for the end of February. And I think we were going to discuss what data we wanted to collect from those early voting things and discuss that on the 5th. And so my question, I just wanted to verify with Greg that discussing it on the 5th would give the staff enough time to implement whatever suggestions we come up with, or do you, should we discuss it earlier? Because I had in my head March was the election, which it is, but the early voting is taking place on the 2nd of February. So I just want to make sure, Greg, that if we discuss it, what we're going to discuss on February 5th, that's enough time to, you know, collect whatever data we're going to be, you know, prepare to collect the data we want to collect.
Let me check with Diane and possibly have that on the 16th meeting instead.
Okay.
January 16th.
Okay. And then, sorry, one more?
Sure.
Resident parking. It looked as though the actions say we're scheduling a public hearing on the resident parking street list for our next meeting on the 16th. And...
Well, the public hearing is going to be in February.
Okay.
That was just to talk about getting, scheduling it, right?
I don't, I guess I was a little unclear what the action was when I looked at it. Because it said...
Public hearing.
It says public hearing.
Resident parking was.
I think it was to schedule the public hearing for September. So you were going to discuss a date.
So we had an action at town meeting. We changed, you know, made a change. And the residents wanted the list updated prior to enforcement in May. Right? So it just wasn't...
Sometime between March and May, we should have a public hearing and decide which...
Okay.
Okay, so is that what we're discussing?
Yes.
It's not the public hearing. That was my confusion. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Returning to public comments. We have Peter Colosa here to talk about relevant regulations. He has said that he does not want to take questions. It is the practice of our board to take questions from the board and from the public on all but a very few topics. And I would like, I would not like to require, and I cannot, we cannot require Mr. Colarosa to respond, but I would like to hear the board's opinion of entertaining questions.
I think that we should entertain public comments and public questions. I mean, we can ask.
Yeah, I mean, this is our meeting, and I think, I think it would benefit the Board of Health to at least hear our questions and...
And the questions of anyone who happens.
Absolutely.
There is a process for doing that.
Okay.
I am not the Board of Health. I am a member of the Board of Health. So it is inappropriate for me to be a messenger, if you will. They can, any comments or questions, I mean, let's clarify this. Any comments or questions on content can be sent in writing to the Board of Health, and they will be addressed or brought up at a public hearing. It's inappropriate for me to answer a question for the board without the board being present. And quite frankly, I think it's insulting to the board.
So I, my...
And, and, and...
Just to finish my comment. Um, I don't disagree that it may not be appropriate for the Board of Health to answer the questions, but I would think that collecting questions as early as possible is not a bad thing. So I would like us to...
John?
Yes, no, I agree with Kathy on that. There is a lot, there are a lot of topics where, that come up, that the select board listens to what the public's comments are or what the questions are, but we don't necessarily respond in terms of taking a position because we really, it's just, oftentimes, it's just the start of getting a whole lot of information, which we have to digest. And with regard to the material that is going to be reviewed by the Board of Health today, I think it's a good starting point to find out where the, you know, where the points of public interest lay. And then as a, you know, people could think about that, and in a future meeting or in the public hearing that you have, you're able to address them.
As long as I'm not responsible carrying the messages to the board.
The board can review our minutes or our...
Mine.
Or the video.
Mine.
Okay.
And to a certain extent, a certain extent, the Board of Health functions independently.
Yes.
So I just want that to be made clear to the public that just because somebody might have a comment or a suggestion, it doesn't mean that the Board of Health must act upon it. I think it's good for all of us to hear what people have to say, what their feelings are, their opinions. But to also understand that they're not...
To your point, not to hold it against you.
No.
No, I mean, they could say, what Health did this and what did you guys do?
Right.
You can't.
We are separate, we are separate organizations.
Right.
But we have our usual procedures, and we will continue to use them. That being said, I'd like to hear your...
What I'd like to do is I'll give you an overview of each regulation, but before we get into that, I would like to give you a little background of how they seem to be or why they seem to be. As Becky pointed out, we report to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Because we report to them, we are deputized to enforce the Massachusetts laws on health. The regulations that are law come down to us from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and we have three options, or we have two options. We adopt them, or we can vote to make them more stringent. That seldom happens. They're usually stringent enough. And quite frankly, and then we return it to the Board of Health, to the Department of Public Health. They review it, make sure it meets the law and all that, and they file it. If they're uncomfortable with it, they send it back to us and say, you have to change this. Here's a recommendation on how to do that. The reason why it's rare that anyone ever makes it more stringent is because the Board of Public Health is concerned that it may be challenges where there's not consistency of all the boards in the state. And they don't want to get in the middle of that. So they discourage, they say, take it or leave it. Let's go from there. So we were notified in September that one of our stores in our town was selling cigarettes to minors, and they had expired licenses. They fined, the state fined them. The state sent them all kinds of, you know, notices, told them they had seven days to be licensed. They paid the fine. We have now corrected our internal system so that we have a better idea of what licenses are due and when. And I will tell you, as of before Christmas, everyone has responded to 2024 licenses. Five are incomplete, which I think, believe, means they haven't paid the check yet. But I'm not sure on that. But they've all responded. So the fact that this happened, the unlicensed portion of it or expired license portion of it has been addressed. As part of the notification, they said to us, your current regulation is defective in that it does not prohibit the sale of cigarettes to minors. And we said, okay.
But that's the state?
The state said that.
But the state...
The state prohibits it.
Prohibits it, right.
So they said, the law states you can't sell to minors is the verbiage that you need to update your own regulations so that you can enforce it. Because you can't enforce it unless it's in your regulation. That's what the first one is, all right? We did make one editorial comment in that it does mention in the fine print in here someplace that marijuana is considered a tobacco product. We thought that it would be prudent to bring that into the title so that there would be no misunderstanding in case somebody didn't want to read all the way back to the back page. So that was the one editorial that we took on our own.
Is the flavored tobacco provision statewide? All right.
This is, this regulation should have before you is the state regulation.
So they're not, these are not yours?
No.
For the tobacco?
For tobacco products.
Okay, so the typos in there are theirs?
Yes.
Okay.
I could take full credit for that, yes.
Okay, on page, well, it's on page nine of my... It says, except in the case of smoking bars, notice to consumers that the sale of flavored tobacco products are prohibited, well, is prohibited at all times.
The state definitely knows that.
Okay.
So you're not necessarily adopting directly what the state has? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that we took the existing regulation.
Yeah.
And we added the clause on preventing sale to minors. And we added the marijuana to the title.
So even the ends, that those were already in the town bylaws? The E and D as...
Not bylaws.
For health regulations.
Regulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I know you have nothing to do with what I got received. My document has large sections highlighted in yellow.
Right.
Are those new?
Those were questions that the board had that we wanted to discuss and understand.
So the draft we're looking at is not necessarily the draft you will, the Board of Health is planning to put forward?
They're right here. I don't know what you have, but they're right here on the counter. Let me get them for you.
I was wondering that too, Ann, about the highlighted.
Yeah.
What those, that signify. That's what they sent, yeah, yeah.
I can just jump in for a minute?
Sure.
I also see that Wendy, our health agent, is on Zoom as well and can provide some of the administrative details as necessary.
I'd love to speak, Peter. If you walk out of the room, I can see the room.
He's here, Wendy. And the health agent, Wendy Hanspury, would like to speak.
Please.
Hi, Peter, do you mind if I just give a brief overview of what the office did with the regulations?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the, it is...
I have wells, now I have synthetic cannabinoids, and now I have environmental tobacco marijuana. Okay.
So the environmental tobacco and marijuana regulations, they did come to us through a state-supported group, and those regulations incorporate the state laws regarding tobacco sales to minors as well as their recommendations for tobacco sales, you know, and and other issues regarding tobacco and smoking areas. So it's a bit of a combination of both the tobacco sales to minors and the no-smoking laws that are state laws as well. You know, no smoking in workplaces, things like that. So there's a bit of a, it's a combined document, just tobacco control and smoking. The options allowed by the, not allowed by the state, the options provided by the state include things like the, the, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but it includes some of the, is it, smoking distances? You know, and those are the local Board of Health decisions to make?
Yeah.
Which board did review at a meeting and chose, you know, made their choices. So it is a, it is a state-supported format and regulation that we took, and the board made choices to make it a bit of their own. Marijuana was included. It's part of the existing tobacco and marijuana control, environmental tobacco and marijuana control as, as well as the electronic delivery. To make sure that the aspects of marijuana were included, we also included the electronic delivery of nicotine systems, as well as the electronic delivery of non-nicotine systems, which would be, you know, substances other than. And that's sort of where the ends comes in, and those highlighted yellow areas are choices that the board made. I hope that helps, Peter, a little bit.
Yeah, because Peter's not, you can't, what, what these, the pages Peter brought in from outside the Board of Health office, they do not have the highlighted areas we received. So, but it does. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome. It's such a wholesale sort of change.
It's basically an update of existing regulations.
Right. So this, this document is a blended document of the state regulations and the local regulations that existed. And the state, but the state regulations, these are, these are updated regulations that came in up in the past month or year or two that are being put in here? Have they been there for a long time or what?
I checked, I just, I checked back, and the selling to minors, the furthest back I went was 2010, when it was still prohibited. So, and the age of the minors has been changed twice since then. Went from 16 to 18 to 21. And apparently, we missed all three of those.
No, actually, you did incorporate them in 2017. Your regulations do have the tobacco sales to minors. The piece that was missing was the, was the state requires that you, part of the penalty, be to shut down the business for a number of days, and that's a choice. The number of days is a choice at the local level, which is included in this regulation, but it wasn't previously. Also, the last time the state updated the regulations was to remove flavored tobacco, menthol tobacco, and I believe that was in 2020. So somehow, something was missed.
These regulations don't say specifically menthol. They say any flavored tobacco. Is that consistent with the state regulation?
Yes, yes, it is. Because they did, those draft regulations did originate from the state.
Can the police enforce a state law?
What? I don't know how to answer that. When we...
You don't, you don't need to answer that. It's just a general question going out, because I think the Board of Health is so...
Oh, let me give you an example during, you interrupt me.
Sure.
It might answer. During the COVID situation, we did not have a health agent.
Right.
So the health agent, so we could not enforce the restrictions from the state. So we went to the police. We were told by the state then, you need to go to the police. Police had to go to their union and, you know, and they enforced it for us. Our agent can enforce all of these regulations. Wendy can enforce them all, but she needs an escort, that's fine. Hopefully, that doesn't come to that, but...
She is a formidable woman, and I would...
Yeah, but still, you know, you don't want to push your luck. I'm sure that she's willing, capable, but actually, she did, on a restaurant situation, have policemen accompany her just to stand there and smile.
Just so everybody's aware, it is a standard practice when you do certain actions to have the support of the police, whether it is the local police or maybe you would have the, you know, Essex County Police accompany agents, because we we need to be able to support, you know, you build a case for court. It's not every situation, and I certainly can take care of many of them, but there are certain situations where the state recommends that you do have a police presence, and that is to the benefit of the town, should things be escalated beyond that point. And then there's also, because, you know, a person's, potentially, there's a dangerous situation, but we try to avoid those.
We don't want Wendy beating anybody up. We set on this, and I move to the next nine more questions on that.
John, do you have any more questions on the tobacco and marijuana delivery systems?
I don't, I don't accept, I guess, the general one, Peter. So has the Board of Health, they, what the Board of Health is saying is that the regulation that's been published here is what they are suggesting be approved. You're not just throwing out a bunch of various possibilities. You're saying, this is what we endorse.
Correct.
Fine.
Even though it's a draft and still has questions?
No, I don't know where yours came from, but the ones I just gave you is the official one after our last meeting that we voted to move on.
Yeah.
So I don't know where...
What specifically is it the Board of Health is asking of us?
They're presenting, they're presenting new recommendations as a courtesy.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you. The second one is synthetic marijuana. The story behind that is that apparently there were some stores in Beverly and Salem that sell vaping products. And they decided to expand their product line to include vaping products that contain synthetic marijuana, which is against the federal and state law, by the way. Any age.
Okay.
How'd that work out for them?
Well, Beverly went to the state and said, hey, you guys need to come in and enforce this. And they said, oh, no, this is interesting, given our experience. The state says, oh, no, you need to adopt the regulation and enforce it yourself. We can't enforce it. We don't want to, we don't have the resources to enforce it. Which is interesting that somebody came and inspected our... I don't know how that happened, but, you know, sometimes you have to pick your battles, right? So we, they adopted, they asked for a regulation from the state that complies with the state statute law. And they said that Beverly has adopted it, and I believe Salem and PVD are adopting it or in the process of it. We asked for a copy saying, as long as we're talking about tobacco, you know, why not get ahead of the game and just adopt it? So we didn't change a thing. This was exactly as it came to us.
Thank you.
Not that I anticipate anyone selling it in town, but you never know.
Well, it's, it's smart to get in front of that.
Kathy, any questions on this one?
Okay.
John?
No, I'm good.
Okay, the last is the well regulation.
Yes.
The existing well regulation is very, very detailed in what you have to do to get a permit to drill the well. It's very well done. But it focuses mainly on location on the site and construction of the well itself. It does require extensive testing prior to getting the permit. And part of that testing is the quality of the water. Now, it stops there. So, okay, I test my water, and it's contaminated. Now what? Doesn't say. It says, well, you know, the board, you have to bring it to the board. The board will tell you what to do. So we said, well, instead of making it a guessing game, you know, why don't we look back and see what the board told people to do? And basically, it was get a filtering system from a certified, you know, supplier and filter and treat the water before you use it. And many people now, you know, have private wells, have adopted the one or two tank filtering system. Most of them, not all, most of them have annual maintenance contracts with the manufacturers of those systems. They come in, they change the filters, they test and all that. What we were looking at was folks that have septic in private wells on the same property.
Which is likely, given the way Manchester's laid out.
Maybe. There's a very high probability that there will be biological contamination. Now, if you remember last summer, she's from Gloucester, I think it went down to the river. All the beaches had contamination. If you looked at the state report on what those contaminations were... If you looked at the state report on what those contaminations were, they were pathogens from the human digestive system. If you notice Gloucester now has a big sign on the boulevard about this, this beach, the water is tested Memorial Day to Labor Day, could be contaminated with biological and swimming here could be hazards to your health. And because nobody was testing, reading the bulletin board that is in the wrong, facing the wrong direction, they would just go to the beach and jump in. So that requirement is to be tested once a year for biological contaminations. It's about a $300 test. I'm sure that it will go up with time, over time. If you have no biological but chemical contamination, depending on what that is, is a requirement to test maybe every five years. If you come up with no contamination whatsoever, then it's every 10 years just to make sure it stays that way. We think that since we have a fair amount of private wells, that the water should have the same quality requirements as the public drinking water. And that's the intent of this regulation. It's an extension or of the existing regulation, which ends with the, the existing regulation ends with the construction and then you're on your own after that. In surveying the wells, we have wells that run from 12 feet deep to over 300 feet deep.
Approximately how many wells?
I wouldn't bet a cup of coffee on it.
Drinking wells?
They're supposed to report, the installer reports to the state when they are done and us. They are supposed to update the state and us, should there be any changes. If they discontinue, if they change the volume, whatever this, and they don't. So if you ask the state, how many private wells are in Manchester, they'll tell you, ah, I don't know. Here, here's the list. So the idea that we incorporated into this was to have everybody do a baseline test. Everybody with a private well do a baseline test. If you come up, if you, if it's not, if it's decommissioned, great. We'll take you off and we'll make sure you decommission it properly and we'll take you off the records. If it's clean, see in 10 years. If it's, you know, a chemical contamination, then we need to have an inspection in five. And if it's biological, it needs to be more often than that, has to be yearly. The yearly one is, is recommended by the EPA.
You just said it has to be tested every five years, but the regulation says every year.
For biological.
This is nitrite, nitride, pH, sodium and iron? Which, none of which sound biological to me.
Well, section six.
Six, yeah.
This is, section six, bacteria, E. coli, those are both biological. The others are included in that test series, I believe. Would you come and you want to test for? No, free pH, whatever. The other ones are more hydrocarbon related?
I had that question too, about that. It didn't seem to.
I guess, why, my question would be, why did you, why did the board include irrigation wells? And I don't expect you to have an answer to that, but.
I could explain our thought process.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
We, we debated this a lot. And obviously, drinking water is obvious, right? That's got to be clean as possible. Agricultural, we finally agreed that if you're spraying your tomatoes with contaminated water or whatever, it's probably going to get into your system. So that's probably not a good idea either. Irrigation, we discussed and debated a lot in saying, if you're spraying your lawn, now if you have contamination, it's on the surface of the lawn. So is that healthy for you, your family, your pets, the postman, you know, anybody else who happens to walk on your property in the summertime in sandals? They're getting exposed to this contamination. Now, you know, if they have a private well through irrigation, technically, the money to test versus the money they're saving on their water bill is insignificant.
Even with PFAS and the other, other type of testing, that's seems to be pretty expensive. And I'm asking simply because.
This, this is, the, the filters that they currently have on the market filter out PFAS.
Some of them.
I do not know.
That's not precisely what we hear from the Board, from the Department of Public Works.
I can't speak for them. I can only tell you that there are filter systems that, now this is for private wells, this may not, actually, there are some for the faucets too. I'll tell you, the ones on your home faucets run about $300 to $400. The, the frequency of changing the filter, it depends on volume of water. So, you know, it could be manually, it could be every six months. And I know I have a filter at my house that says it lasts a year. It doesn't, it lasts several months. Just like your faucet, I'm assuming there's a lot less volume going through there. So that might very well be, I have a whole house filter, so even my laundry gets clean water. So that's the thought process behind it.
Yeah, just, I just want, so my question is around enforcement. So I'm not clear about how these new regulations would be enforced. It sounds like we do have an inventory, it may not be perfect, but we have some idea of who has a well. It sounds, I'm trying to get it in my head around the operations here. It sounds like you are anticipating sending a request to those homeowners to inform them of the regulation, ask them to test. But it does sound like there's got to be somebody at Town Hall who's processing all of this information. It sounds like a lot of administration. I'm wondering how this would be performed and paid for.
Paid for?
It sounds like, it sounds, I may be wrong. It sounds like more work than we currently do, so.
Right.
I, I don't know if Greg would need to hire a temporary person and I'm wondering where the money would come. I'm just, I don't understand enforcement, so perhaps.
Yeah, we intend to give, we intend to send a notice, a letter to everyone we have on record that has a well and ask them if the well is still functioning, please sign up for a test. You have one year to sign up. Now, they have no control over the testing company's schedule, so we're trying to make it as flexible as possible. You have one year to sign up at least.
And the homeowner pays for the test?
Pays for the test and they send the test results to us. Okay, now, we have in our budget a request for modification to the files kept in the building department, a building inspection, which will highlight every property that has a well on it. So we will be able to update that. They'll be instantly available. We can keep a record on what the results were so that if you require another test, we can notify you. You have extra amount of time in 2025 to, or 2026 to test your well, please send in your test report.
So I guess my, I'm not, so I better understand the process, so thank you. Not sure it answers my question. My question is, is it the volunteer army that is the Board of Health that follows up and makes sure people are doing the appropriate testing or getting penalized if there is some penalty? Or is it Wendy? And if it's Wendy, then can she handle this additional workload? Or is she going to be looking for additional staff? That is my question.
She has not said she can't. And we've been talking about this for six months. So I think between the computer upgrade that we did and I don't, I heard there were 60 active wells. I wouldn't bet you a cup of coffee on that. So even if all 60 had to be tracked annually, I don't think that's overwhelming. It's not like we have 500 wells.
Peter, in a different group, we're trying to reduce the use of treated water on, for irrigation. And, and.
You mean town water?
No, I, I mean, town water, yes, totally, totally, town water. And, and, and so on the one hand, we would like to encourage people to have, to use wells to keep their lawn green rather than using water that we treat as, and the treatments are going to get more and more expensive. This regulation where it applies to irrigation has the opposite effect.
Well, I would, I would say maybe you could make it an incentive. Since you are the Water Commission, you could give them a credit on their home use water bill if they do their annual testing for $300. I'm sure that if they're watering their lawn, I'm sure it's costing them more than $300 a year.
And the PFAS test, the initial PFAS test, that's, that is not, that, does not, I think does not fit $300.
The apparatus to do it is, the filter is $300 to $400.
Yeah.
How often you change it depends on the volume.
It's, it's the detection, the initial detection that, and the, I think the regulation suggests every 10 years.
It does. So this is a proposed new operational process, okay? And operational processes, there's got to be follow-up. Not everybody's going to do the test. So there's the, there's always a nagging feature, right, to certain operational, and that all costs time and money. And I think personally, I'm just trying to get my head around that because I know, you know, Wendy's probably busy lady and I, it sounds like more work and I would want to make sure she could handle the workload. I think that's part of the conversation is.
And we have a very similar product, problem with Title V. We sell notices and people throw them in the wastepaper basket.
Until they go to sell the house and can't sell it.
Right. And in fact, Waller notified us at the last meeting that they have requested, I don't know who they is, testing of the private wells on the transfer property for, for contamination, just like Title V. So we're moving in that direction. Again, I think you could incentivize them and give them a credit on their, on their drinking water bill for $400. I mean, these people, I think that are using large volumes. And I agree, we should figure a way to control that. I mean, they pay thousands and thousands of dollars a year right now.
I got a question, Anne. Yeah. So, Peter, so the list is maybe around 60 and you're not betting any amount of money on that, but 60 is the number that you've got. Do you have any idea of what percentage of those people are, it's just irrigation, it's not drinking water?
No. I would tell you that I was told and have not confirmed it that there are a lot of private wells down by the Mill, Mill Street before they ran water down there, and those are all drinking.
I think living place where it is also.
So, but, you know, I haven't confirmed it, so that's just.
If there isn't public water down the street, it's pretty good bet.
Right, but the expectation is probably that most are, most of these people are on the public drinking water system.
I, I have no idea. I'll take your word for it.
Cause, cause the plumbing goes just about everywhere in town. I mean, I, I don't know where it doesn't go, but.
I think it stops after rural tracks.
No, it goes, it goes all around University Lane, out to Magnolia.
Plumbing, water?
Not sewer, water, right.
Not sewer, just water.
Anyplace with fire.
Yeah, okay. And my second question is, so, you know, I've, I've got to think that the vast, vast majority of these people are probably on the, on, on our water system and are using this for irrigation. Second question is, what percentage of the wells are in our current aquifer versus, say, along, along the shoreline, the ocean line? Which is a different aquifer from the aquifer where we draw our, our public drinking water. Do you have a feel for that?
Nope.
Okay, cause those would be two different sources of water that are being tapped on. And I've got to believe a lot of the larger, larger properties are of course along the ocean line and that is not in our current, is not in our aquifer, the north, north coast aquifer. So they're drawing water from a different source.
Which means that it doesn't make sense for them to follow our drug regulations since they can draw water without affecting our aquifer.
You know, and that's the other problem with the private wells, there's no practical way to determine how much they take out, how much they draw.
But if they're not.
If they're not in.
Tied into our aquifer.
No, if they, if they're private wells and they're using it for whatever purpose, there is no practical way to determine how much they're drawing.
But, but that's a different topic. And what, what we're saying is.
What John was saying is, is that if they are not taking water that the town could possibly use, why restrict them?
Water flows downhill. Our aquifer is up by Beverly Pond. That water is working its way all the way down to the ocean underground. So you drain this one by the shore, you're gonna, it's gonna refill eventually. It's gonna come from someplace.
Yeah, but the geo, the geography is that it's feeding into the shoreline down Sawmill Brook. And there is a, a pretty big rocky structure, according to Paul Horstley or Scott Horstley, who advised the Water Task Force, I guess, that indicated that the water that, it divides the water that's coming from our aquifer from all of that along the shoreline. And so they're two different sources.
It sounds like there needs to be a discussion between Board of Health, the people who understand, then the groups that understand the aquifers and how they actually interact or don't interact. And DPW perhaps. It just, I think that it would, before we create a tight, we being a town, create a penalty of sorts, which telling somebody on a well, they can't use it during a drought, we need to make sure that they would be in fact impacting directly our water supply.
I mean, with all due respect, the usage has nothing to do with us. We, we wouldn't tell them they can't use it during the drought. That's up to.
Well, that's in here. That's in here.
It says, as per the town. You know, that's not us. We're just saying if the town says, you know, use less as a drug, you have to do what the town says. You know, that's just like I do.
It's saying even if they're a well, they cannot use water. And why would we tell somebody whose water is sep, an entirely separate source?
That's a courtesy to the town. I mean, it's easy enough to alternate. I mean, we did it. As a courtesy to the town, if the town says, hey, everyone use less water, everyone is everyone. And, you know, you start going, you know, this street's okay, that street's not okay. You're really going to be making it much more complicated. But that has nothing to do with us. That was a courtesy to the town. It's not a health issue.
It's a, it will be an issue. Wendy, please.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say I, um, Peter is right in one respect of, yes, when the board was talking, there, it, it was definitely a courtesy to make sure that our regulations for private wells match the town's regulations for the public water supply regarding drought and the state regulations, which drives the town's regulations regarding drought. There are justifications for that and I'm sure we're gonna be discussing that at our meeting. But protecting all of Manchester's water sources, um, groundwater sources, regardless of whether they currently impact the drinking water supply, the municipal drinking water supply, was, I believe, part of the discussion and reasoning behind, um, our interest in not just the drought, but also the, um, regulations for testing and, and all of that. And I had initially raised my hand because, um, uh, uh, sorry, I believe it was Kathy who asked about the, um, impact on our work. Just so you know, most of that is done through a current computer program. There's an application for a well. We would of course do have to spend time sending out letters and responding to calls. And that's sort of within what you expected to get from having an in-house health agent, health director. Um, it's one of the things that is important that you have a contact, somebody who can answer these questions, those kinds of things. The board also made very clear at the discussion meeting in December when they decided to put these forward as recommended regulations, that the first year at a minimum would be spent in an educational frame so that we will be talking to people who have wells. We will be looking into the questions of how many are drinking water versus how many are irrigation? What is, where they are, uh, what depth? Things like, um, you know, the people who do test, are you coming up with, um, you know, coliform bacteria? Is, is there a need for further education on, you know, maintaining your wellhead? All of these things, just talking to people and, and getting the information out there. We would spend the majority of the first year just providing information and gathering information. And, you know, we, we would work with people, not necessarily set up as a punitive, like right out of the gate, you know? Test now or you're gonna be, you know, in trouble and not be able to use your well. We want people to be able to use their wells. It's not intended to prevent people to get their well. We intend people to, if they get a well, be able to use it and know what it's, what is in it and know how to take care of it. And like I said, we're looking at the source water as a whole because we wanna protect all of Manchester's source water, not only the drinking water supply, which is very important and should be the priority in the entire, um, setup. But hopefully that sort of answers some of the questions that were out there. If, Peter, if that's kind of what you're looking at.
Yep, thank you very much, yep.
Or anything else online?
I have one question. And this is, um, comes under the definitions. And it was of, um, on the draft regulations. And it was under the agent. And it said, um, just any person designated and authorized by the board, being Board of Health, to implement in whole or part these regulations. To the extent provided by the board, the agent shall have all the authority of the board and shall be directly responsible to the board and under its direction and control. Um, my question with that is, is that last part where it says, under the board's direction and control, is that for specific aspects of enforcement? And the only reason I ask that is because, um, the agent is an employee. And employees come under the town administrator. So how does?
No, the, the town, the town has a courtesy, which we really appreciate, does all the administrative work. So Greg handles the retirement, handles payroll, you know, billing, invoices, fine. Union, God bless you, have at it. The policy and implement, and implementation of the policies, which get to the day-to-day, what are you gonna do, is under the direction of the Board of Health. That's state law.
So who does the, um, the reviews then? I mean, I thought that there was.
We, I review, I, I, I'm the chair, so I have to, I review with Greg.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
If there's a personnel issue, I, first of all, we try to resolve everything internally anyway.
Right.
But, you know, Greg is a third person out of here. And it's worked very well, I, I think. I don't know if Greg would agree, but.
John has his hand.
Yes, John, please.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm, I'm, in, in reading through all of this and from the discussion here, it just seems that I, I think that it would be great to try and get in touch with this, well, all of these well owners in advance and find out a little bit about the specifications, what they're using the well for, when the well was drilled, what they know about it. And I'm sure that a lot of the people, perhaps they inherited these wells from, uh, you know, several homeowners previously. Whether it's active now and if it's not, has it been decommissioned or decommissioned formally? I think it would be great to get a better understanding of what these wells are being used for and how much they're being used, et cetera, before you, you know, make a lot of assumptions about what the rules should be to apply to all of these folks. And I, I don't think it would take a lot of time, but I think you could come up with, uh, all of the key questions just so that we know what we're dealing with. Cause I don't feel that we know what we're dealing with here as well as we probably should and, and, and start to put, uh, rules in place without really having a handle on them. That's just my initial reaction.
Yeah, and if I may, yes. Um, I, I agree with John. I just want to reiterate to anybody who might have come on after we started the meeting that the Board of Health functions independently, um, independent of the other town.
It's where we can't tell them what to do.
Exactly. And I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that anybody listening understands that. We can make recommendations, state what we.
Ask questions.
Ask questions, exactly. I, I just wanna make sure that, that anybody listening understands that and therefore knows to whom they should reach out.
To the man that, yeah. And, and, you know, our intent is not to be confrontational, believe me.
Yeah.
We really wanna have policies that everyone can live with, which means in some instances, everybody's gonna have to give a little.
Yeah.
And that's, unlike our federal government, we'd like to set a precedent and cooperate.
I, if no one else, I have a question on the penalties section, which is page seventeen of the, of the draft regulations. I understand the idea of escalating penalties, but, um, it says in one place, each day's failure to comply with a final order of any provision shall constitute a separate violation. So the first day is fifty dollars. If I understand what you're saying, the second day is a hundred dollars because it's a different day. And the third day is three hundred dollars and every day thereafter is five hundred. That seems a little steep.
Well, the intent, and, and we could probably make the wording more, uh, better. The intent is you have to respond to our notification when you receive it. Doesn't have to be fixed day one, cause that's no control, you have control over that.
Yeah.
But if you ignore it and throw it in the trash and we have to send you another one, those fines escalate. We're more than willing to work with you. You know, you get a notice, say, hey, you need to have your well tested, please. Confirm that you're gonna have a test. People come and say, fine, they said, send us the schedule, just, that's fine. But if, you know, we send notices and they ignore it, we send notices and ignore it, then you're gonna find them. Not for the solution, but for the response.
Okay, I, I, if you could make that.
Yeah, that, that language is not clear.
Yeah, well, well.
So that would, I agree that that should be clarified.
Change the language, yeah.
And also, um, I really like what Wendy said about the first year being, you know, educational. I don't see, you know, I'm wondering how that could be incorporated here as well. I mean, it's, it's not clear if you, if you, I'm, I'm a big fan of if you're gonna have a regulation, there's gotta be a way of enforcing it, otherwise don't have it.
I agree a hundred percent.
And, and so if, if the first iteration of this is really intended to be education, um, I, I'm kind of aligned with John. Would it be better to not have a penalties section in? Or just, just, is there a way to, uh, take the next step on improving what we have by getting the inventories, baseline testing? Is there a way to improve the situation without, um, getting into the penalty phase? If that's your intent anyway, so, you know?
Well, the intent, the first year was, was to educate, as Wendy said, and to update our database. So we're gonna send it out to every well that we think we have and ask them, do you, is it still functional? Please have it tested, blah, 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 blah. That's the whole year.
So that, then, then, my recommendation would be, you know, you finalize the language on this, but don't implement it until after one year. So your initial, um, mailing to those well owners is this bylaw or this regulation will be implemented on this date in the future. And you spend that, you're educating people, but the, this doesn't go into, you know, it doesn't get chiseled in stone until that date. So everybody's on the same page, you've got a whole year to educate people and, and then everybody's clear, you know, next January or next February it's going to take effect and the penalties will take effect. So I'm just, I'm looking for some clarification, uh, because I, I think it's a little fuzzy.
Yeah, we can make that clear. I mean, the intent was, just for sake of argument, twenty twenty-four, we educate everyone. We ask everyone to have their wells tested and identified if they're active or not active. That's twenty twenty-four. And then we were gonna revisit, when, when we had, when we had the data and we said, oh geez, this well's twenty years old, it's got no contamination at all. We say, you know what, you have a variance, forget it. You know, you, you have a huge contamination, you need to test more. And, and use the data that we have for twenty twenty-five to decide how to, uh, address almost on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I think Wendy has her, Wendy?
Uh, yes, if I could just, I have, um, so Kathy and John, I understand where your concerns and thoughts are coming from. In other towns, my experience and understanding from other agents and boards has been, when you're looking at something that might have a wholesale effect, the way this, uh, well regulation, private well regulation may have, people will want to see the regulation in place. And so adopting it and then separately, potentially at the same meeting, having a draft of it, if not the following, having a policy outlining the, you know, year-long education, the understanding that, um, you know, that, that there is, there is no penalty structure in place, you know, until we get to a point where we have certain information or, you know, for a whole year, whatever kind of framing the board would want on it. But I do know that residents or people who are affected by a regulation, restaurant owners or something like that, will be uncomfortable with the speculation of doing something versus, um, having it in, in writing. That's just a comment.
It's a lot of sense, yeah.
That, that makes sense. On the other hand, if the year of education means that the regulations get changed significantly, then you're in the same position, yeah.
And I might make a final comment here, kind of following up on Ann's, uh, comment just a second ago there. We're talking about education. Frankly, that's going in both directions. Because as I sit here, there's an awful lot that we've gotta learn about the wells that are in our town, where they are and all of the other stuff that goes with it. So that year of education is really gonna go in both directions. And to Ann's point, maybe just, you know, whatever, whatever regulation you've got might get shifted around or pushed around a little bit based upon what we learned. But, uh, it's going to be a, you know, a learning process for everybody.
It's, it's what the Board of Health learns. We can learn anything we want.
That's correct.
And we.
The Board of Health is really in the driver's seat here.
Obviously, we would be more than happy to amend any regulation as the appropriate data comes in. There's no pride of ownership here. We'd be more than happy to, so we'll have to talk to the board. But somehow use twenty twenty-four to educate and gather the data, requiring every existing well to test and let us know that you exist. And then have education and have enforcement maybe in twenty twenty-five. But wanna be fair to somebody who may be considering it too, cause they're gonna say, well, geez, I don't wanna dig a well until I figure out what the heck's going on here. So, I mean, we could say, this is the worst case. It's only gonna get better as we get more information.
That makes sense, yeah.
I, I would like to go back to the, the baseline, which, well, after the regulation is in, in place, we'll only apply to new wells, but I assume that every well would be required to do the baseline testing. It was on page nine.
Correct.
In section three. And my impression from talking Chuck is that testing for PFAS is non-trivial. It requires careful, they, they're, the employees who draw the water out of the town system to do PFAS testing.
Are specialists.
Are specialists, they are not allowed to wear, uh, to, to use antiperspirant.
Yeah, I know, I'm familiar with that whole, I was on that power resource committee, so.
Yeah, so that, that, yeah. That baseline testing is, is going to be a non-trivial thing. And, and in particular, um, for people who have irrigation wells.
I have one more question, cause you met, you spoke earlier about Title V. And I'm trying to think back, when Title V was first implemented, how was it done? Because I'm only familiar with it from a point of sale standpoint. You sell your house, you've gotta get your septic tested. And to me, a water well, you know, maybe that's a good approach to start with. You, you test when you're, there's gonna be a change in hands. But does anybody know what that implementation of that law looked like? Did any, was any, I don't, I don't recall being asked to, um, test my septic system when Title V was implemented and I had one. So I'm just wondering.
I, I'm, I'm quite sure that it was only point of sale.
Yeah.
At the time of sale, because I inherited a property that had two sisters.
Yeah. Right, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, um, you know, the, the baseline testing of everybody, to me, sounds aspirational. But once again, I'm just wondering if we can take baby steps here and is a point of sale option. So it very much aligns with Title V. You know, you're gonna sell the house, you've gotta test the, the septic, you gotta test the well. It all comes together nicely. I'm just wondering if that might be a, a place to start when we're ready to, um, you know, start implementing penalties of that nature. Just, just a thought.
John, anything else?
No, I'm set, set, Ann, thanks.
Becky?
No.
Greg? Greg? Greg?
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Anyone online?
I don't see Brian.
Well, he's 10 minutes late.
No. Make us stay out.
See any hands?
Okay. Nobody else has a hand, huh? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful to have that up.
And I, I.
And please, Phil?
Ann?
I, I know that as a.
Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you wanted to ask anyone from the public if they wanted to make a comment or two before you.
Oh, I, I haven't specifically asked if anyone in the public wants to ask a question. I kind of assumed that people would be assertive, but please, if anyone in, in the public would like to ask.
Us or Peter a question? Because Peter said he doesn't.
Yeah, if you wanna ask me a question, please do it at the public hearing.
But they can, they can comment to us.
Yep.
Right. I don't see any hands.
Hi, this is Steve Kelly, 355 Summer Street. If I could ask a question?
Certainly.
I'm, I'm just looking for more context. So is Manchester paving the way here? Are we the last municipality in the state to, you know, tackle this challenge? Who, who are we following and who are we leading? This sort of the question. Thank you.
And I guess that was actually one of my, my questions is, is, do you have the names of other towns that have similar regulations?
Wendy? Is she there?
She is there.
This is really annoying.
Fine, yes.
You should move your chair over there.
Turn around, yeah.
If I move it over, my back will be a no.
Take, take one of the soft chairs. Go ahead, Wendy.
So in this region, we would be a, a leader. However, in Western Mass and in, in particularly a lot of those Western Mass towns, but also communities, say Merrimack Valley, that are, you know, are mostly wells, do have regulations. Most towns have well regulations, but they are as our existing ones are and haven't been reviewed, however, in many years. Some are, you know, 30-plus years old. But now, particularly because of the concerns of PFAS, but there, and the droughts we've had, many towns are currently looking and revising. We did start with the state recommendations. So the state has provided a draft of private well regulation and there are guidelines. So we are not outside of, of that by far at all. So they are recommending PFAS testing. They are recommending annual testing. It was from them that we got the wait 10 years between testing for heavy metals and, and that sort of thing. It's from them that we got most of the, the end of the regulation where it talks about penalties and variances and things like that.
If, if you happen to think of a local town that's working on similar, the local town, Board of Health, that's working on similar regulations.
Hamilton is currently.
Hamilton, okay.
Um, so, and just people who have expressed interest are Salem, Danvers. Ipswich has recently reviewed their regulations, but they're looking at them again, I believe. Rockport's interested. Gloucester mentioned they would be interested in looking at it. Essex is. And again, all of them are, have well regulations that are fairly old. And there's also the question, as you brought up earlier, time to look and review. But the Board decided this was, you know, one of our priority regulations because our current ones are quite old.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, to summarize, we don't wake up one morning and say, oh, wouldn't it be wonderful to make this regulation? All of the information that we use to make a regulation comes from the state. And it's consistent with the state law, they double-check everything. So we're not creating stuff.
I'm hopeful.
After having some of that synthetic marijuana.
It does sound, though, that we may be ahead of some other towns if we were ready to hold a public hearing already.
In this area.
It sounded like we were on the early, early adopter area.
Are there any other questions from the public? Or from anyone else?
I don't see any hands, right?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great year.
Thank you very much.
Very, very.
Happy year, Peter.
We'll see you at the hearing.
Thank you.
Oh, and if you wish to make.
Written comment.
Written comments, that's fine. But please do it individually.
Yes.
Don't do it as the Board. And particularly, you know, if you wanna come to the meeting as a citizen.
We're, yes, indeed. We will not convene a meeting for that night.
Don't get me in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay. The next topic is the committee appointment process. I ask that this be brought forward. Because when we talked, when we adopted the policy, we decided we would defer it for a year. And it's been 18 months. And the policy says that anyone who has served two consecutive terms in a three-year office or five consecutive terms in a one-year office, the position will be advertised as, as vacant and the office holder will be allowed to apply. Given, I just wanted to check in and make sure, because I would like, I would like to send out a notification to each of the people who will be affected by that this year, you know, in the next month or so. Debbie has put together a list. Debbie, one point of information is, three or four of the members of the Finance Committee are elected by Allen.
Right.
nominated by Allen, and Allen can do whatever he wants.
Right.
So Maury Creighton is not on the list.
Yes, right. So we're actually, we have, should I have a governance meeting? Next Thursday?
The 11th.
The 11th, so that's next Thursday, right. I, I think it would be good, we didn't really talk about how we would operationalize it, so I think that's a good time to discuss that. And in addition to sending out an email to the individuals, I think it would also be good to discuss it with all the committee chairs at our all committees meeting on January 25th, before we notify any individual person. Because that way, we could, you know.
Get a sense of exactly how much.
The rationale and, and what we're trying to do. And I think that would be a.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
A question, Ann. I, I did see the list that Debbie sent out, and there are about 36 people on it. I think I counted up 36, but it's not clear to me how many of those folks are at the two-term point or beyond.
Yeah.
But I look at, there are an awful lot of familiar names there.
Yeah. Debbie, the first two pages of every town report is a list of everybody who's on a committee. Not fun. But that's how you go backward and figure out.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just have not. Yeah, we, we need to know how many we're talking about here, because.
I would say probably most of them.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to be for the 11th.
Yeah.
For us to know how many and who.
Breaking and ending process has to be done carefully. And, and so, if it was all, if everybody on every committee, you know, was, had two terms in, this would be a problem, right? So we, we gotta have a census to.
Even if most of the people on any committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, exactly, so.
But I think it's gonna be a lot, in any event.
So that's something we could have before the 11th?
There's a governance meeting on the 11th?
Yeah, and we could.
Is it, does it conflict with a public hearing on, of?
Board of Health?
Board of Health? One of these pieces of paper says January 11th.
I think.
And the other one says January 26th.
I think Susan was targeting like 4:30.
Ours is 4:30 on the 11th.
Yeah, but time is.
Right, Board of Health's meeting in the morning.
Well, the morning.
The Board of Health is having their public hearing in the morning?
I believe so, yes. That's their regular, regular Board of Health meeting time.
Yeah, their meetings are usually early.
Hi, I'm sorry, I just happened to be on. We are actually meeting at 6:00 PM on the 11th and on the 25th to, to the public hearings.
Thank you, Wendy, and thank you for doing it that way. It's, it's important for my hearing that the public be there.
Yes, the Board recognized that it was necessary to allow people to get home from work to be able to speak up.
Thank you. Okay, I, so, we're meeting.
11th.
Meeting next Thursday. Next Thursday, and we will start talking about this. And if there's anything I can do to help you get that list together, that would help.
I'll do the best I can.
Couple of tiny typos, do I just shoot those to?
Tiny typos?
In our, um, policy.
Ah, okay, yes, by all means.
To you or to Debbie or both?
Debbie.
Not that, they're just tiny, I'll just.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we.
But when we go to put it in, we should, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. So we talk about it on the 11th and the 25th at the general boards meeting, and then we come back and we put this on as an action item in the first February meeting? Great. FY25 Town Budget Discussion. Greg?
I'm sorry, you're looking for?
Um, we, we, we decided we're set with item two and we're going to the Town Budget Discussion. Is there anything you wanted to say or shall we just make stuff up?
Yeah, you know, you could make stuff up, but let's see. I really was looking for initial feedback from, from all of you after hearing the, the presentation at the meeting back in December. If you have a chance to start to go through the booklet, I know there's an awful lot of information there, but if you had a chance to flag any particular items that you know are of particular interest, looking for more information, want us to pursue a particular avenue that you don't see in the book, that'd be helpful to hear. If you have some thoughts on some of the proposals, yea or nay, that, that's also helpful. So I'm not looking for your definitive exhaustive lists this evening, but if you have some initial thoughts, that, that helps me and the rest of the staff to be prepared and perhaps provide some additional information that might be helpful to you.
Kathy?
So, I may, I apologize, I may have mentioned these the last time we were together on the 18th, but I'm not sure we spent a lot of time discussing content, so if I'm repeating myself, apologies in advance. In terms of, yeah, I, I, during our discussion, there were a lot of verbal comments made about, you know, the capital and the fact that we are going to be retiring some of our debt in, in the near fu, well, semi-near future. It would be, it would be nice to have those verbal comments outlined in, in a table or chart, and I didn't see that in the material. If it's there and you can just point me specifically to the right place, please let me know, because I think we're going to be, you know, we've got some big things to decide in terms of buildings and facilities and, and just having some of our verbal conversation put in a table, put in a chart would, would be helpful. I'm not seeing a real, and I, I know I mentioned this before, an investment in technology. So it could be buried in some of the pages and it's just not coming to the top and I'm, and I'm not seeing it. So once again, if it's there, you know, please help me understand where it is. Want to make sure where, where we can have, and I, I think we're already doing this, but once again, it's just not clear, where we can have fees covered, the increased costs. I know we did talk about that, you know, with Sarah Malish, and she was gonna raise some of the fees. Any, any place we can do that, we should be covering our costs. And so I do think we talked about that. And I think the, the last thing is, Peter and I took an action to meet with Bayon on the harbor plan. So we have, we said we would do that after the first of the year. I'll get with them and see if we can put together, you know, help Bayon with his operational plan. Do you have a, do we know when that's gonna come up for discussion from a budget standpoint in the Finance Committee meetings? Or is that something they're gonna be talking about tomorrow night?
They'll be talking about that tomorrow night, yes.
Okay. I might, I'm, although I'm the liaison, I may be in the car listening to that meeting tomorrow night. Could, could you take an action just to let me know when that particular discussion is gonna be on their agenda? That way Peter and Bayon and I can make sure we, we get the needed information in the right timeframe.
Yes, yeah, we'll do.
That was it. I just plan on going to all the meetings and having the discussion there.
I've got a couple of comments, Ann.
Yes, John?
Okay. Question on the overall presentation, Greg. Looking at the color coding, and green always seems to be, in any pie chart, and we've got a ton of them in here, green is just by default the largest chunk of the pie. And back on page 30, where you really define expenditures by type, I would like to see, it just makes it, I think, easier to read those graphs and at an instant know this is where the money's going, if the color coding that is provided on page 30 is carried through the rest of the presentation. So other expenses is always gonna be green, salaries and benefits is always gonna be blue, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Because when you have the largest piece of the pie green, well, the reason it's a pie chart is that you can see what the largest expense is. And the fact that it's always green doesn't tell you it's not adding to your information.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, but programming it that way, then when you glance at something, automatically, oh, oh, you know, the expense in this particular area is all, is all salary or it's all capital or whatever. So just an observation, and I understand that in, in, in a lot of those pie charts, you've got more detail, but each of those detailed items still falls into one of these general categories as laid out on page 30. And maybe you put in a parenthetical, you know, parenthetical comment under, under whatever you decided to make that particular piece of the pie and say, oh, that is, 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 is other financial uses or debt service or something like that. So.
Yeah.
Just thought that, that's an observation. The other thing on the bond issuance that we're planning, I think we need some graphics on exactly what that money is or where it's going. And I think it's, am I wrong or is it all water, one way or the other?
Well, it's, it's water and sewer.
Yes, okay, it's water in or water out, but it's all water?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, so two utilities.
Right, okay. So I know that you've got that in a couple of lines in your explanation, I think upfront, and then later on, you've got it someplace. And I think that that would be, it would be helpful to see that someplace, because there, I mean, that's a significant commitment the town's gonna make or is gonna consider in, in April. And the other area, I think, was, in, in terms of the overall budget, the history of the budget, is that page 21 where you really can look and say, this is how the budget has worked out each of the past three years? Because there are other places where you see expenses and they're different numbers. And I get a little bit confused, I don't know if others do, but I do. Whenever I'm looking at other graphs and you've got various funds and, and some of the numbers don't jive, but should I be looking at page 20, at, at. Whenever I'm looking at other graphs and you've got various funds and, and some of the numbers don't jive, but should I be looking at page 20, at, at, at page 21?
One of those is, is the best summary, yes.
Okay, that's the best summary, because I do see expenses listed in other places that I look and say, oh, well, this is all of the expenses that we've had, and I've got different numbers by a couple of million dollars. And I understand, maybe it's cut in a different ways, but there's also, there is money that is missing. But if that's the case, all right, that's, that's what I will look at. And those are my comments for now.
Okay. All right, now.
One of my projects for this year is, is to address the parking issue that has been identified in a cou- by a couple of studies as we have enough parking spaces, we do not have enough parking management. And I would like to see the police salaries increased by enough to, and I'd like it identified as parking enforcement agents. And I, we can discuss whether it should be three or four, but it would drive revenue to the Boy Scouts, maybe convince the Beach Boys to do their shuttle to the, to the, Beach Boys, to do their shuttle to the, to the school, if we in fact charge people 50 bucks every time they park for more than two hours and went to the beach. And I understand that increasing the police budget doesn't look good, but perhaps you could also increase the anticipated revenues from parking enforcement.
That reminds me, weren't we going to have a discussion on that in January with Chief Fitzgerald? He wanted to talk to us about kiosks.
Kiosks, mm-hmm, kiosks, right.
I didn't see that on the...
I, oh, I thought we had kind of buried that one, I think.
No, I think we deferred it to him.
I was hoping it had been, okay, well...
And the reason for my comment there is because, to your point, enforcement could be done in stages. You might do enforcement in a parking lot differently than on a street. And you can try different things in different ways, so if we're gonna talk about budgeting for enforcement, that might also include some type of technology investment, and, and therefore having that discussion might be helpful with the chief. He, he tried to get on our calendar.
Added something in early February, because I can't face anything along the 16th.
Well, that was on the 19th in February, is it not, we already? We have parking discussion, yeah, enforcement.
I think we had for it, I guess.
Okay, so that's February 19th.
Okay. So then, if, when the finance committee is putting their schedule of when they're gonna discuss different subjects on the Wednesday, Greg, perhaps you could mention we're gonna have that parking discussion in February. So, does it make sense to have the budget discussion before or after we do that?
I, I think enforcing the parking regulations, even if we put kiosks.
Right.
Because the kiosk only gives you, you know, 35, they'll probably give you 2 bucks.
Right, no, I'm just...
10 minutes over 2 hours is 50 bucks.
I was just suggesting that they may want to be aware that, about what the topic is, that we're gonna be discussing, what we're gonna be discussing as part of their budget.
Yes, yes.
It's just a timing issue.
Because it was also a matter of not being able to get parking attendance or, or remember to hiring, hiring people to go and check how long they've been.
And the chief was also looking into technology solutions that were implemented in other places that were more automatic and didn't involve conversations with humans.
Yes.
Right.
So that, we've got that on for the night, and, and it would be good if, if the chief could know well enough in advance what information we hope to discuss.
Yeah, okay, that's... My allergy to kiosks has nothing to do with it.
I think he's got some other tricks up his sleeve, it's not, not just kiosks.
This is one place where fines, anyway, right, John, do you have anything else on the budget?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Brian, do you have anything on the budget?
I don't see Brian on here, no.
I just asked that to be rude.
Do we have any more information on the school timeline? Are we gonna have a all boards meeting? And so budget, I wasn't sure if it was inclusive of all of that.
Should probably come up in, in the liaison report, but, um, oh, I think that's next. If we're done with budget.
On the budget.
The, um... I was at the, um, there is, I was at the December 19th, I think, school committee meeting. Anne presented a 3.4 increase budget, which is more or less level services. Level services was debated as what exactly that meant. It's, it may mean moving somebody from here to there, it may mean splitting a job between two schools, but it would not mean dropping programs. She asked the principals to come up with what they would like to add, and that came out to a 4.2 increase budget. And, I have... That the, um... Is it, it's right here? Anyway, the, um... The principals gave lists of what they would like, included a number, several, a couple of positions of people who instruct teachers how to make, how to be more effective. This is in particular addressed to the situation at the Essex Elementary School where their, their standard tests are coming in bad and, and not at all resembling those of Memorial School. And there was some discussion that the... Maybe the, the, the discrimination of low, uh, low expectation. They need the principal, the new principal, I guess, the active principal now, at the elementary school, would like to see more work with the teachers on how to push the kids a little harder. And that's not in the level services budget.
Is that what they're attributing the lower scores?
Yes, that, that, well, there are a number of aspects, but one of the aspects is that they had a long-term, long-term principal who may not have pushed her staff as hard on, focused on things other than the rigor.
Did they discuss things like teacher rotations between the elementary schools?
Um, no. The board was fairly clear that they wanted to make, to make, to give the principal some of the things that they wanted, but that Essex was determined not to increase, have their increase in school budget be over 2.5%. There, there had been the collaboration group of people from the finance committees, the select boards, the school committee, and, and the two town administrators. That was a place for testing out ideas. The school committee has determined that they will only participate if it's an open meeting with an agenda and all of the other parts of the meeting, and...
What was their reasoning again? I'm trying to remember. Why they?
They, they feel that they are being undercut by this committee, which is making decisions for the school outside of their group.
The school committee is...
The school committee is being undercut, and they don't know what's going on, and they want to know what's being discussed. And they think that everyone should. And I believe the town of Essex has said that they can participate unless it's an advisory board and not subject to you.
The town of Essex said that?
Yeah. And...
You mean the, the, the select board and the town administrator?
And Pam is trying to figure out how to have an open meeting that's not open. Which is...
Was there any more conversation about the all boards meeting?
Yes, there will be an all boards meeting at the end of January.
End of January?
Yes.
Was the date so long?
I mean, all the boards committees, all the heads?
Like we had the last...
The last time.
January 25th, the same night as the...
Oh, no, but we have the high school cafeteria. Don't we, Debbie? What? You're saying the all boards meeting?
We're talking about all the boards committees, the, the...
This is actually the five, should be called the five boards meeting, because it's finance committees, select boards.
Okay, this is a different committee, all boards, that's the one I'm talking about.
The governance project, we have our meeting, yes.
The 25th.
I'm asking about the five boards related to the two towns and the school.
Yeah, and I don't, I thought it was scheduled for sometime in late January, but I don't know. The fact that we have not been able to get together, that, that, that the former collaboration group has not been able to get together to discuss what we'd like to do.
Right, and I don't have anything on my...
Greg, Greg, have you heard anything, or?
In terms of a, a next, a five boards meeting, no, I haven't heard, haven't heard a date. I know that there's certainly a desire to do it, you know, end of January, early February, for sure.
Well, given the fact it's already early January, would, would it be possible for you to send a little note to Pam and say, scheduling is... Our calendars are getting booked with other budget meetings, and would it be possible to pick a date?
Right, so part, as, as Anne suggested, part of the bind here is not having that collaborative group function, which would normally be the avenue for setting such a date.
Right.
So I think, I think you're right, and I think the school committee just needs to go ahead and, and say, here's three dates, which ones worked for the majority of the people.
Right, in the absence of a collaboration meeting, I'm just wondering if the two town administrators and the superintendent can kind of...
Pick a date.
Pick a date, yeah. Let's not make this overly complicated, because you guys, between the three of you, you should, you probably know when all of the, the meetings are, and...
Yeah, I said, right before Christmas, I suggested the three of us get together soon. You know, I'm hoping to get that on the calendar in the next, within the week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kathy, anything from your liaisons?
Nothing new since the last meeting.
Same. John?
No, I've been away more than I've been here, been around, and it's been holiday time, so no, I don't have updates since the last meeting.
Greg, I think we're ready for the town administrators' report.
All right, thank you. So we've discussed having a special meeting on the 11th, which would be a focus on the governance project, an update on that project, and discussion of the planned all boards meeting, which was just discussed on January 25th. And we will review the, the agenda for that and some of the objectives that we have for that. So the, assuming everyone's schedule allows it, we were thinking a meeting at 4:30 on, on the 11th. And, I don't know if you wanted to move that up to four, just to have a little space between the, well, the health hearing. That might be a possibility if people's schedules allow it.
Greg, could you speak up a little bit? I'm having a hard time.
I'm sorry.
Thought it was just me.
Maybe my microphone isn't picking up as well. So the January 11th meeting will be a special meeting where we focus on an update on the governance project and talk about the agenda and the objectives for the meeting on the 25th.
What time, what, what time on the 11th?
4:30.
4:30.
What time on the 25th?
25th, I believe, is a 6:00 PM.
So that's the same as the Board of Health when they're going to be talking about their... So is that their well-regul- wells?
Is there a second hearing? They're gonna have their first one on the 18th, so...
But it's, it, I believe it said it was two different, one meeting is gonna be for the tobacco and the other meeting will be the well, so...
Right, so, um...
The, the dates that they have are the, the tobacco and artificial ma- synthetic cannabinoids are the 11th and the wells are the 25th.
Right.
So on the 25th for the all boards, it's, it was, it's really geared towards the chair... Chairperson of each board and department heads. And so, a little bit of divide and conquer approach in terms of, perhaps some of you could attend the Board of Health hearing and comment on the well regulations, and Anne would be your primary representative to the governance project all boards meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss that on the 11th, so, but they, I believe Debbie sent out that date...
Yeah.
December, so they decided to overlap, oh, well.
Well, there's that, and I gave you an update on the efforts to have a deal with the Masons Building. That is progressing, I think, in a positive direction. We are working on preparing a purchase and sales agreement, which we hope to have a draft for the Masons to review in another week or so. If all things continue to, to advance, then there would be a, an article at the annual town meeting for voters to approve funding for purchasing a portion of the, of the building and property, creating a condominium arrangement with the Masons. So again, I think good progress is being made, we'll get some additional paperwork. And in the future, if you'd like to go into more details of that, it'd be appropriate to do so in, in the executive session for pending real estate matter.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
I think we need to do that.
Yeah.
And specifically, what I'm interested in is the operational parts of the condominium arrangement, because that, we've only talked about purchasing, that's the easy part.
Right, right.
When it comes to associations, the operational model, the governance model, that's where it gets sticky, so...
Yeah, so we'll plan, plan on that session.
Okay.
And, yeah, a couple of other FYIs for you. Yeah, coming up for, for my schedule, we do have the Massachusetts Municipal Association MMA, their annual meeting, 19th and 20th at the High End, if folks are interested in attending, certainly happy to, to cover the registration costs for you to do that. If folks are interested in attending, certainly happy to cover the registration costs for you to do that. There's a multitude of different sessions that are held. The Select Boards Association of the State typically has a special Saturday session. So if you're interested, certainly the MMA website has the lot of information on the, on the conference, on the annual meeting. And just let me know if we can help with you attending.
Greg, good. Sorry, quick question on that. I would have attended if I was going to be around. Is there anything specifically related to facilities on that? You know, we have a lot of big expenses, capital, the facilities, master plan. Do you know if there's any track related to that type of work?
There typically is a session or two on capital, master planning and capital financing. I'll scrutinize the list of workshops to see what's, what would fit into that category.
So specifically, I was wondering about facilities construction. And the reason for my question is over the holidays, I had dinner with a relative who in his town, they have undergone a similar estimating process for some big facility. I can't remember if it was DPW or Public Safety. The original estimate came in over 20 million. And, but they found another solution and can do it for six. And it had to do with construction materials. So I'm trying to get more information on that and feed that to Chuck because it certainly perked my ears up. But if there's anything related to that, you know, the challenges that towns are having with those type of large construction efforts, I know you'd be interested.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, let me, let me take a look. And if not at the annual meeting, then often there are sessions that Department of Revenue, DR, puts together perhaps, or sometimes the Managers Association or the Select Boards Association will host.
As soon as I find out the specifics of what piqued my interest, I will definitely forward that info.
Yeah, okay, great.
And did you all get the one that I forwarded?
The performance and goals.
I thought that that.
Oh, yeah.
And also, if I could just, there's another one that is, on Wednesday about, I think I forwarded that, flag flying policies. I'll be attending.
Tomorrow, I think, right?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, that's tomorrow, Wednesday.
Right.
I think it's at noon tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yep.
Right then.
Any other questions, comments for Greg?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I think so.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor? John?
Yes, yes.
Kathy? Ann says yes, Becky?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you very much.
Happy New Year, everybody, thank you, Greg.
And happy New Year to everyone.